... meeting for Monday, February 25th. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:30. Will you all please stand and join me in Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Good evening. Good evening. Obviously, you realize we have a late start tonight. We just went through interviews for commission members, which will be appointed tonight, and we also did our interviews to fill the Ward Two temporary seat tonight. So that's what moved us into the 7:30 hour. We had to start so that's as early as we could start so people could get home from work. So anyways, we're starting at 7:30 tonight. So with that, Nate, we call roll, please.
Yes, Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Wang.
Here.
Councilmember Grau.
Here.
And Mayor Wachill.
Here. Moves us to the next item, adopting the agenda. Corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, an entertaining motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wang.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to adopt the agenda. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to visitor presentation. Is there anyone here under visitor presentation? Anyone? All right. No one under visitor presentation. We'll move to item number six, approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Wang to approve the previous meeting minutes. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Moves us to item seven, consent agenda. Consent agenda, items that need approval but not necessarily need a conversation, but if there are any conversations, they can be discussed. With that, is there any discussions? If not, an entertaining motion to approve consent.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wang.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to approve consent agenda. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Did your mic off down there? Just checking.
It's my voice.
Okay. I just didn't know.
It's two liters of pot.
I was wondering I was missing something.
Yeah, he's drinking the pot.
All two liters of it? All right. Moves us to item number eight, which is our first order of business is commission appointments.
Mayor and councilmember, councilmembers, as you are aware, over the last two meetings, we've been conducting interviews for all of our commissions with the exception of the Planning Commission. Each year, we have people who either step off or positions that become, need to either get reappointed or become vacant that we need to fill. The Planning Commission, we actually took care of it back in January because we actually were getting pretty low on the number of members there and needed a quorum. And the rest of the commissions, we interviewed over the last two meetings. So we have three boards that we're considering tonight. The first one is the Park Board. Here, we have one person who is running to be reappointed. We have a opening for student, and then we have two alternates that are available. Heritage Preservation, we have three positions that are available. Two are incumbents asking for reappointment, and one is a new member. And then the Human Rights Commission, we have two openings, which are both alternate positions. So staff can certainly answer any questions you have. I would recommend that you take each individual board separately.
I'd just like to thank everyone who interviewed the last three weeks ago. We had some interviews, and then tonight, it's always good to get people who want to be engaged in the public and want to get involved. So I just want to thank everyone for throwing their name out regardless if they get appointed or not and come back if, and look for other opportunities if your name's not put out there this time.
It was a good group, so I think we can start with the Park Board.
Before we start, I, sorry, we're having some computer issues there. I just want to echo what Councilmember Grau talked about, that these commissions are so important to us and all the people that step up, they're such quality candidates, and it's so challenging, it's difficult to really pick the ones. And again, I just, I want to say the same thing. Thank you for everyone that's done it. And please, I hope if you have any interest in the, this is done every year in January, if you have any interest in any of these commissions, you know, please consider it. Talk to any of us if you've got any questions. There, most of the people you talk to after they've been on them, they have a good time. They met new people, and it's kind of an exciting time aside. So thanks to everyone that's came forward, and I hope that anyone that's not getting appointed looks at it again in the future. So thank you to everyone.
May I add something?
Absolutely.
And, you know, just to also add something too is that, you know, having served on Planning Commission for a number of years, you know, I think it's a great way to be able to get involved and to really help learn how the process works and to be able to have a voice at the same time, too. So I think it's a really, really great way to be able to help serve your community, to be able to, you know, really understand, you know, how things actually work so that way that when the time comes that you do need to get something done, then, you know, you'll have a better perspective on, you know, how to be effective in terms of working with council, working with the city in terms of making things happen. So I think it's a great way to get engaged and to participate in our local government.
So your, your motion is to start with Park Board? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. Do you want me to make the full motion?
Make the full motion. Well, here, I'm gonna, I'll do this first. I'll read who is going to be appointed. So Ernesto Vincent Kim will be the student rep. Matt Uderman will be the first alternate, and Elizabeth, is it Barth? Will be appointed as the second alternate. So with that, you can make a motion.
All right. I move that we appoint Ernesto. Ernesto again, and then Vincent Kim in that youth spot, and then Matt Uderman is the first alternate. Elizabeth Barth is the second alternate.
Second.
Really?
Yep.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Grau to appoint the Park Board. Again, Ernesto, Vincent, Matt, and Elizabeth to the Park Board. So discussion. I think we've kind of touched on that. We're fortunate to have good candidates, so thanks again. Hearing nothing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Let's just go to HPC. That would be Greg Davies, Christine Coleman, and Steve Mueller. And I'd entertain a motion to appoint those three.
I'd make a motion to appoint Greg Davies, reappoint Greg Davies, reappoint Christine Coleman, and to appoint Steve Mueller to the Heritage Preservation Committee.
Motion by Councilmember Grau. Second.
Second.
By Commissioner, Commissioner, Councilmember Hatfield to, again, appoint Davies, Coleman, and Mueller to the HPC. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll move to Human Rights, and the names brought forward are Darrell Scarborough and Seth. Help me.
Spreadberry.
Spreadberry? Can't read your name. Would be, and they're both, actually, the commission is full, they're both, so Darrell will be alternate one, and Seth would be alternate two. For anyone that's not certain what the alternates are, they're just, in case someone's not at the meeting, they just step in and fill in those spots. And I believe that most of them, they're even voting members while they're there just because they can. So, all right. With that, I'd entertain a motion for Human Rights.
Motion to appoint Darrell Scarborough and Seth Spreadberry to open positions on the Human Rights Commission.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wang to appoint Scarborough and Spreadberry to the Human Rights Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. All right. That takes care of that item. Next one we're moving to is 8B, Chaska City Council Ward Two Temporary Appointment.
Mayor and Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is in relation to a vacant seat in Ward Two. As you remember, back in January 7th, former councilmember Greg Bowe needed to resign because he was elected to state representative. And at the last council meeting, it was decided to move forward with a special election to fill that seat. In addition, to also the Ward Four council seat, as there, as that position basically is filled by appointment until such time that there was actually an election. With that being said, one of the requirements under state statute is the council does need to appoint, or they shall appoint, somebody to the position prior to any special election. And so that, we have five candidates tonight that you guys had an opportunity to interview, and this position would serve in, in this role up until the point that the special election, which would be on May 14th, would occur. So we certainly can answer any questions, but it'd serve basically from after they get sworn in next week to the May 14th date.
Well, again, and this is even, I don't know if it's more important, but I think they have a bigger role as the people that came forward to apply for the council position. We're very fortunate, again, we had five very solid candidates that any one of them could have stepped in and filled the spot. We weighed out our options, and the good thing is, is the council came out unanimous, and our decision is to have that spot filled by Nate Bostrom. So like I said, we were very fortunate. We had five really good names, and it was never easy to try to figure out who was the best of the five, when they're all strong candidates. But we let, I think a lot of it led to the fact of Nate's experience within the city in the short term that this really is, is that helps bring him up to speed a lot faster and get him on board. So, so anyways, that is our, that is our recommendation to move forward. So we would need a motion and a second, Nate. So with that, you're, anyone's free to speak, but otherwise, I would, again, look for a motion to appoint Nate Bostrom as Ward Two council members. With the swearing in, next, next Monday, would we just say at 7 o'clock?
Yep.
Probably right at the start of the meeting.
At right at the beginning of the meeting.
Right at the beginning of the meeting. So next, next week, 7 o'clock, we'd swear in and probably have a short couple of minutes and then start the meeting. So.
All right. Motion to appoint Nate Bostrom to the Chaska City Council Ward Two position.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wang to appoint, again, Nate Bostrom to fill the temporary vacancy in Ward Two. Discussion.
I just want to echo what the mayor said for, you know, me looking at the position really is, it's a two and a half month window, and really getting someone up to speed quickly is, really don't have time really to get someone up to speed quickly, to be honest.
Right.
So someone who has that experience can walk in, step in there and observe that, and then really let the voters decide then in that special election where to go. So that was kind of my thought process, and, you know, and it was good to see that we're, you know, a unanimous decision there, so.
I think that's the best part of it, was that it wasn't a unanimous decision. So everybody saw it the same way, so that's a good thing. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Congratulations, Mr. Bostrom. Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night. We'll see you here bright and early next Monday. All right. That moves us to item C.
Should we tell them that the next meeting is planning to go until midnight?
No, because it scares me, too. So, all right. We're going to move to 8C, which is Adopt Ordinance 962. Adopt ordinance to simultaneously hold a special elections to permanently fill vacancies in City Council for Wards Two and Ward Four.
And since I, since this affects me directly, I will recuse myself from this item.
Okay. Mayor and Councilmember, the item in front of you tonight is in relation to basically creating through ordinance an authorization to allow us to hold a special election. That is not something that's actually set up in state statute, but needs to be allowed for in our ordinance to be able to move forward. So you'll see that the ordinance in front of you that, that we have drafted is real specific to this particular case, so it's looking at Ward Two and Four, and setting the special election date to be held on May 14th for both Wards Two and Four. And again, as we talked about last time, both wards need to be up at the same time. So Ward Four, because, because basically the position is appointed until the next election, and this special election constitutes that next election, so both positions would be up at that time. Just as a note, the process will actually start up pretty quickly here, so on March 5th is when filing openings start for the positions, and that goes until May, or March 19th. Then we have candidates just have a couple of days to decide if they really want to stick in it or not, or whether they're going to withdraw. And then once that happens, we move very quickly to get the ballots actually printed because within a week after that absentee penalty starts. And so we'll start the mail out process of ballots at that point. We do have a period that will occur a week before the elections where we'll have onsite voting, where people can actually come in and vote, not actually on election day, but before. And Kevin will have his work cut out for him because he'll be the marketing master in chief here to make sure that everybody in the community, his job is to make sure everybody in the community knows that there's an election. So just a small task like that, so. But, but we'll be starting that process right away, and Denise has really got that already up and going, so you'll see things happen relatively quickly after this. So staff does recommend approving ordinance number 962, which would establish the special election.
Great. Discussion up here. I think we're all pretty much fully aware of what's happening. This is just the legal piece of it. So with that, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 962.
I'd motion to approve ordinance number 962, providing for the holding of simultaneous special elections to permanently fill vacancies on the City Council for Ward Two and Ward Four in the city of Chaska.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Grau.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield, adopting ordinance 962. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Right. My mic's moving back. We're going to move to 8D, Adopt, yeah, Adopt Resolution 2019-14, Approving the Assessment Role for the 2019 Street Utility Reconstruction Project. And this is a public hearing.
Mayor and Councilmember, as we talked about at the last meeting, we actually had the public improvement hearing. So there's different stages of the process that we have to use when we go through, it's called a Chapter 429 process for actually doing a reconstruction that involves assessments. As with all of our downtown street programs, they are public improvements through a 429 process that do have a component that's special assessments. And so there's set statutory guidelines and processes that we need to go through, one of it which is actually establishing an assessment role. Now, some cities will go through the process of actually establishing an assessment role after the project is complete. We actually, early on in this process, decided to move forward with establishing assessment roles prior to the project starting, and the reason being is that there is a 30-day appeal process period for, for residents to be able to appeal the assessments. And, you know, because it's a big component of our financing, we want to make sure that there's not any sort of this lingering stuff out there that might be unanswered questions for residents before we go forward and finance a project to go forward and get constructed. So it's, it's sort of one last step to make sure that we sort of go through the process of buttoning up a project from a planning and financial standpoint prior to actually going and constructing it. From this point forward, it's going to be, you know, very much hands-on with our, our engineering staff, out with the public and talking about specifics. So, you know, how do we not interrupt their lives, or how we interrupt their lives as little as possible during that process? So I'll let Matt talk just a little bit about sort of what the process for how we establish assessments and how we communicate that to people.
Yeah. So consistent with past projects in downtown, the city does what's called a special benefit consultation. What that does is it really sets the, or establishes what the assessment amounts are. There are certain criteria that are within special benefit consultation, which is done by an appraisal outfit. The city retains the services of Patchen, Mesner, and Brum. They've been performing all of the special benefit consultations since the inception of the downtown street reconstruction projects. Through that analysis, they look at a number of different items. The biggest, I guess, starting first and foremost, the residential properties in downtown have consistently been $7,500. That number has not changed since the city started the process in downtown. Even though the upticks and things, the, that number has just stayed consistent. As it relates to non, well, I would say, non-residential properties, there's a number of components that go into that process that they look at in terms of, you know, use, zoning, square footage size. They look at, from a market analysis, pre-construction costs as well as after, or not, pre-construction values versus after construction values. And it's really holistically across the entire metro to establish more of a sales-market comparison for how those assessments and things get set. The city, and I just reiterate, is, we do not, staff does not set the assessments. The Minnesota State 429 chapter that Matt mentioned before requires that the cities identify the amount of benefit to each property, and that's how we establish the, have established the process in assigning assessments in downtown. In the packet, there was a, the conclusion, or at least the summary, of all of the parcels that the city looked at this year. Again, what comes out of that analysis is a range. There is a low and a high end, and what's used to establish the assessment amount is the middle. City does not assess the lowest, does not assess the highest. There is a, we assess the, the average of the two. So that, that really sets the assessment amounts. Like Matt said, there's a process that we go through in terms of notifying residents, keeping people abreast of, you know, the timing, this evening's meeting, in terms of if there, people have questions about what their assessments are, who they need to contact, and what that process is to essentially, if they have any concessions they want to make about the assessment amounts. Tonight's meeting, like Matt had said, is basically for council to review those assessment amounts if there are any questions. Again, when I refer to the special benefit consultation, I brought it this evening, but in the packet, like Matt had said, the project schedule was, is set based on the 429 process. When you look at the overall assessments in town, and I know Matt will talk more about the finance piece and things for how the city is able to finance projects, but the overall project for this year, again, council saw this at the improvement hearing, is the total project costs $2 million. Oh, this is bad.
$2.8 million.
$2.8 million. The assessments without the administrative fees and things come to a total of, just short of $240,000. In order of scale, that's about 8%, just a little over 8%. The balance of the overall project costs, the 92%, the city covers. So it is, it's a number, but in comparison to the overall commitments that the city is making towards rebuilding and constructing streets in downtown, the number is quite less. The assessments for this year, just so folks are aware, they were listed in the resolution, but all of the property owners are able to pay the assessments without interest payable by November 15th of this year. So they're simply come in and pay them off. Otherwise, the city levies those on the property taxes, which are payable, starting 2019, pay 2020, and those get levied at the county. Interest rate that is set is at 5.5% over a term of 15 years. And that's been consistent for, for past projects as well. You want to talk about?
Yeah. I think, you know, I think the important thing to point out is consistency. We've been doing the downtown street reconstruction program now for about eight years, and, you know, to that point where we've almost completed all the streets. And, you know, we do a special benefit analysis each year because we're required to. The thing I find interesting is when we started the program eight years ago and what we have for valuations coming back now for the impact of the, of the road improvements on the properties is almost exactly the same. It hasn't really changed that much, that impact over time, and so that number for the residential properties has been at $7,500 for the entire time. And so it's been sort of an easy message for us to be able to get out to people is that what your neighbor experienced or what your neighboring streets experienced is the exact same thing you're going to experience. You can expect to see very similar streetscape, very similar look of street. You can expect, you know, that whatever things that were done during construction to help make your life easier are going to be done on this project. And so I think it's, you know, and the mayor can attest this because he was here back at the beginning. Every year, the hearings become a little bit easier because it becomes the same message, which is great. I mean, at the end of the day, we're trying to create a consistent message out there, and I think that, that people really understand this program now, and, and what we're telling them is the exact same thing that we've told everybody else, too. So, you know, these will be great improvements that happen and stay consistent with what we've done throughout the rest of downtown. And with these improvements, we're going to be probably close to 80% complete with the improvements in downtown, which when you think about, you know, almost a decade ago, we had roads and sewer and water that were, you know, approaching 85 years old, and we're failing. And now we have very good infrastructure in the downtown and stuff that's probably has a much longer lifespan than the stuff that was originally installed, so.
Yeah. Probably, yeah.
It does. Okay.
Center water supplies, you know, I mean, there's a ton of things, bigger means.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if people have, like, lead services going into their homes, which some do, this is an opportunity to address those. If people have, you know, driveways that they want to get fixed, we're able to work with them to get things like that included in this. If they, you know, have sewer lines or things that they think are failing, this is an opportunity for them. You know, we can work with them and the contractor to try to add stuff on as we're going through. So that's some of the individual stuff that we'll work with the property owners on as we go through the project.
So a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Now, so St. John's, they just get one fee with all the property that they have? Is that how that works?
Yeah. If you remember last year, previously, we did have an assessment for, for St. John's. They had a number of parcels that are not highlighted here.
Well, that's why, and, because that leads me to that corner, that white slash out to. Well, that's why, and, because that leads me to that corner, that white slash, that corner of, of Fourth.
Yep.
Where, where that would be.
Yes.
So, so there was an assessment to St. John's last year?
There was an assessment to St. John's last year. This would be in addition to that. Uh, what we would do at administratively is work with St. John's on how they want those assessments spread, uh, because they own multiple parcels here, uh, coming up with a fair and equitable amount as to how, how that amount gets, gets placed.
All right, I, I just, I, I know that there were some questions about how that worked and I remembered saying that it would be next year, but I couldn't remember that. But there were some assessment already this year.
Yeah, it was stuff down on Maple Street.
Yeah, because this shows house numbers on Maple Street, but they're actually all gone and that's part of St. John's.
Yep.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that in my brain.
And, you know, we talk about properties that have really improved, like houses and stuff like that after the projects gone through. St. John's is a great example of improvements that they made to their playground and fencing around. And so, I mean, that, you know, what we're seeing as these projects go through is some improvements that maybe people have been waiting to do for a while, they're doing at the same time, uh, which makes sense. I mean, if it's going to be under construction, you might as well just have it all done.
And then all these commercials that, like, uh, at Fourth and Oak and, and Walnut and all that, that's, I mean, that's consistent in what we've done in the past as well.
Yeah, and we've met, uh, you know, especially with the larger assessments and larger businesses. I mean, like Auburn Manor is a good example. I mean, they've been in to talk specifically with us and we've met with St. John's. And so, um, you know, obviously, they, they have a much larger assessment and so they have a lot of questions they go with that. But we've met with all of them.
Okay. Right. Anything else, sir?
No, uh, it's a public improvement hearing or a public hearing. Um, if there are anybody else that is here.
All right, first off, appears there are any questions? I know some, this stuff is kind of new to most of you. Uh, this is kind of, you know, this is my, my theory of this, I think.
I think it makes sense. Good job, good presentation.
I mean, yeah. The, the thing about it is it's been consistent. You can't say on the east side of the town, you know, theirs was half of what we're paying on the west side. It's just been, we've talked about this for as long as I've been here, about consistency and how we do this and fairness. And like Matt said, year one or two, this council chamber was full of people here either wanting to get information or to tell us what they didn't like we were doing. And we're down to, I don't know if anyone's here to speak on behalf of the tenant or not. You know, if, you know, if anyone is, they're more than welcome to speak and I hope we can resolve it. Because I think, uh, and, and a lot of that is tribute to Matt now and, and Bill Monk in the past, that they're able to go out and talk to the community. And they, they get all their questions answered, they're readily available if they have a question later and they contact them. And that's what we're so fortunate, is that we have good guys. And then, when the project starts, we got Aaron out there on, you know, so they always have a consistent person that they can talk to. And I, I, I mean, I have heard hardly anything about street reconstruction now other than, why aren't you doing my street now? Where before it was nobody wanted their street done. So, um, that, that's the good thing about this whole process is that we've been staying real consistent, so. All right, anyone else, questions up here? If not, I'm going to go ahead and move to the open, for the public assessment. All right, so, uh, we will go ahead and open the, uh, public assessment hearing at eight oh four. Is there anyone that would like to, uh, speak on behalf of their property or regarding this project? Last call. All right, I have no one coming forward, so go ahead. We'll move that clock ahead to eight oh five and we'll close that public hearing. And with that, now I would need a motion to approve, uh...
Adopt a resolution?
Uh, resolution twenty nineteen dash fourteen.
All right, so move to adopt resolution twenty nineteen fourteen, improving assessment role for twenty nineteen street utility reconstruction project.
Right, motion by council member Wayne.
Second.
Second, by council member, uh, Grau, to again adopt resolution twenty nine, twenty nineteen dash fourteen. Discussion. Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. We move on to item, uh, eight E, which is adopt resolution twenty nineteen dash fifteen, approving the concept plan for Chaska Building Center.
Mayor, council member, this is an item that's coming out of the planning commission. Uh, it has to do with the last parcel, uh, down on the old Chaska Building Center site. Uh, if you've seen recently, the, uh, new Formacoat building has really been coming along nicely. It's great looking. I, I'm, I'm pretty impressed with the way it's, uh, turning out. This would deal with that last parcel, uh, that's closest to Cuzzi's. And, uh, Liz will talk a little bit about the concept, uh, that'd be a mixture between, uh, office, uh, condos and, uh, industrial, uh, on the site. So I'll turn it over to Liz.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're looking at a concept plan for the Chaska Building Center Phase Three, uh, being applied by the DDK Construction Company. Uh, so like Matt said, it's the last site, uh, within the Chaska Building Center site, uh, development area. Um, it's on the corner of Fire Lane and Chaska Boulevard, uh, highlighted in blue in this aerial. Uh, so in terms of a background, the DDK building, which is on the westerly, uh, most part of, uh, the development area, was approved in, uh, two thousand and ten. And then in two thousand and eleven for their finals. And then in two thousand and eighteen, just last year, the Formacoat building was approved. Um, and then, to reference back to our downtown master plan, that was approved in two thousand and twelve, which basically guided this area as a redevelopment site. So we're looking at the, uh, last and final phase, um, of this redevelopment site. Uh, so the lot that we're looking at is three point nine acres total. There is a shared driveway component that, uh, basically extends, uh, across all three lots back there on the north side. Um, and this is a shared driveway access that all three lots, uh, basically will be able to utilize. And that will connect into Fire Lane, uh, for them to use. Uh, there's, uh, cross-accessesments that are already in place on, uh, both of the other two lots. Uh, so with this lot, they'll have to do one as well to basically continue, uh, that shared agreement. Again, it has double...
Who's the shared agreement? I mean, who is the owner of that road? Who, is it just the two plots?
Nope, it's all three lots. So the DDK lot there, uh, the cabinet shop there currently, the Formacoat lot, and then this lot.
So they all own it within, within their, each of their properties, but they have to give each other permission to be able to drive across it?
Okay, that's what I was wanting. So, so we kind of go in and do the, bring everybody together and sign the document? That's what I was kind of wondering, who's the lead?
Yep.
Who's the lead if they're all?
We basically make it a requirement because we want to make sure that they all have access to the back of their buildings.
Exactly. Um, so this lot in particular will have a, access onto Fire Lane, uh, which is also the same access that Cuzzi's, um, has access on to. Um, so specifically, what they're, uh, asking for tonight is for concept plan approval. Uh, that's specifically for the construction of an industrial building and then, um, three new professional office buildings. So in terms of what they're proposing on this site, it is consistent with the zoning, uh, that is present out there, which is a planned multi-use district, uh, PMD twenty-one, uh, to be specific, as well as, uh, it's consistent with the downtown master plan guidance for this site. Um, so I have the site plan up on, uh, this slide to show you how it's basically laid out. Uh, so the accesses into the site, they are showing three different accesses onto Fire Lane. Um, each of them will provide access to kind of the separate areas of the site. Uh, the professional office buildings are on their southernmost portion of the site, which faces Chaska Boulevard. Um, so they'll have their own access into their parking lot and buildings on the south side there. Uh, then the industrial building, um, is on the northerly portion. And they're also showing their own separate access, um, into their parking lot in sight. And then a third access is proposed on the north side to again, uh, uh, provide connectivity into that shared driveway system that is present on the north portion of the site.
The creek is on the other side of that red line, then?
Yes. Or, I'm sorry, what was the question?
The creek is on the north side of that red line.
Yep.
Are we going to have to, uh, who, what about the road improvements to Fire Lane? Would we do that as part of this project? Because that road's in pretty rough shape now. Would we do that as we move into this, or?
How does that work?
Here's what I think ends up happening with that is, uh, the county's going through a process right now of doing a, uh, feasibility study or a, a planning study for, uh, Highway sixty-one in front. Uh, it's a turnback road. And so they're doing basically a study from here, going all the way out to where the golf zone used to be. And so, one of the things that's been discussed as part of that is potentially having another breakthrough down to Stoughton Avenue to the south of Fire Lane. That's a discussion that we still need to have and decide, is that something we think should happen or not? Uh, but I would think that any improvements made to that road would actually be done as part of any sixty-one, uh, improvements. Because we might also see Fire Lane, uh, pop out to the, to the north too and connect up with the Eller Brick Road so that we have another connector there. Uh, I don't know, Kevin, if you think differently than that. I thi, I think it has more to do with sixty-one.
Yeah. I, I just didn't know, I mean, because like I said, I know it's, because I didn't know if they get to that, that back access, does the road have to be extended?
No, it, it, it reaches that far.
Right.
We might have to use some maintenance in between, but we'd probably want to wait till sixty-one piece was really going on because, um, that road's going to get chopped up even more if they come in and do some reconfiguration in that.
Is there, uh, is that on a timeline?
They're doing the study now.
Yeah, they're, they're basic, well, they've done the sixty-one west. And now they're going to start moving sixty-one east and start really from forty-one and start moving this way. So this is really in that first or second phase of construction for them, so.
So when's the, when's the, um, the analysis, the study versus the construction phase scheduled?
That's always the big, running down there question. The, uh...
I want to hear this answer.
I, I think the way you end up seeing it done is I think when forty-one gets reconstructed, I think you'll see sixty-one get reconstructed back to the bridge, uh, that is on the, uh, actually, the bridge where the creek goes, on the, uh, east side or west side of this site. And I think the second phase will end up being, going from here down to where Inglor or maybe even down to the golf zone. And just based on looking at where the county is and let, you know, it's possible that the, that this, the state's been short of turnback dollars. And so this county got this when it used to be two-twelve and they're supposed to get turnback dollars from the state to be able to go through and reconstruct it. If, if all of a sudden those turnback dollars become a bill sooner than later, uh, you know, then we could see it. But I would be very surprised if it's in a five-year period. May, maybe sooner, but I just, I, I think what you're going to see first is that section going, uh, to basically where Arby's is.
In terms of, uh, parking out there, um, based on the analysis that we've done so far, breaking down the square footages that they're proposing out there, um, they are deficient by twenty-four parking stalls. And that's basically a, at the point of where they're trying to show additional parking spaces for, um, warehousing that could ultimately change into manufacturing. So, we have started discussions with the applicant on kind of how, uh, to rejigger the site potentially to, uh, really make up for those additional stalls. Rejigger the site?
Is that, is that a...
It's a slang term, I guess. A slang planner term.
They teach that in planning school.
Right. So we have looked at that a little bit to see where we could potentially add additional stalls on site. So, one of the other things that we've looked at too, or have provided an, an analysis on is kind of the overall layout, uh, of the site. Uh, the buildings are pushed back, um, quite significantly if you compare it to the other buildings on the Chaska Building Center site. So we have pointed that out to the applicant. And they do have room to work with in terms of, uh, the building setback that's out there. So, playing with that and what they need for parking in front of their units, there's, um, some options that we can probably work with. So obviously, that's something that, uh, we'll continue to, to work on as we put together the preliminary plan with them. Um, one thing to also keep in mind is, um, kind of the overall, uh, programming that they have set up out here could potentially change. They have six tenant spaces kind of called out in this industrial building. But again, that could be, um, a smaller amount than that. They haven't identified any end users yet, uh, which could very much, um, uh, direct how, uh, this building is programmed. So, um, once they get kind of a solid answer on, um, the end users or the end, uh, marketing potential of this building, they'll have a good idea of, um, kind of the overall parking and layout that they'll need for this site.
What, what are the, I kind of thought that the purpose of those front buildings is just like, uh, small office type condo business.
Yeah, it's basically like the ones...
Three, four people, isn't that a lot of parking spots for, I don't know how many are there?
They, yep, they, they meet the parking for the office component side of things. Um, it's the industrial piece where, um, you know, they're saying they have so much warehousing, but they also have to account for the fact that that could change to manufacturing, which would create a, a larger parking stall requirement.
Twenty-four spots now? How many spots are there?
Yeah, twenty-four, they're deficient by.
I mean, twenty-four is too many.
Oh, I...
Short. And then, if that use changes, because you know what's going to happen? They're going to Cuzzi's and then we're never going to hear from Cuzzi's.
Right.
Well, and that's, that's where you'll see one of the conditions is, is that we have to solve that issue before they...
And as we pointed out, there's different ways to solve it on the site. And so, we're continuing to work with them. But from a concept perspective, we want to identify that issue and say, this is something you need to work on. And themselves, kind of going out to the marketplace and going, you know, is this kind of what the market sees? Maybe it's fewer office pieces, maybe it's a bigger industrial piece. And so, they, they need to refine that and understand that. And this is really that first step and identifying issues and letting them know at a high level, they're on the right course and here's, here's generally what you need to consider as you move forward.
Right.
And I, like I said, I just got to remember it's concept, it's the right get for a shot at it.
Right.
We'll see it again and again.
Yes.
But, yeah, I mean, when they're under ten, you can usually work with twenty-four is a lot of spaces.
Well, you can kind of see that if you pull those office buildings south, then you could get another row of parking on that middle, um, drive aisle, which would get you your twenty-four spots. And so, there's, there's ways to do that, um, assuming this is the right answer. But, uh, they need to kind of really go out into the marketplace and kind of see the feedback they're getting. Do people really want that size of industrial space? Maybe that just splits into two middle-sized buildings or something, or who? They'll, they'll know more as they get out into the marketplace. But they need some, something to go out to the marketplace and say, here's our idea. Get the responses there, understand from us what the issues are, and then kind of pull that all together in a submittal that they'll bring back in the future to us.
So from a, from a concept plan's perspective, I know I've seen like, you know, a lot of concept plans and most of them typically come back fairly close to what, you know, was initially proposed.
Same piece of property.
It's same, yes. Yeah. But usually they come back, you know, relatively close. But the intent here is that'd be a, a mix of, of low and high, right? You know, of like, you know, big industrial on the backside or bigger light industrial versus offices in the front.
And, and if it's changes dramatically, we'll have to talk about that. But at this point, that's kind of where they think the market is. And now, with the direction we provide them, they can go out to the market and kind of see what the market responds and how the market responds to that.
I think the one thing from a, uh, when we're talking about high-level objectives of this site, back when we first sort of got involved to sort of, uh, bring this site together, to, to bring it to market and, and help redevelop it, one of the major goals was to create more jobs down here. And the thing that's sort of exciting as we look at this concept plan is, you know, you think about what used to be down there and, you know, most of it was storage for lumber. And now you look at what's down here and you have three buildings there, or, or you have two buildings plus the ones that they're proposing there that are going to be pretty high employment numbers down there. And so, one of the things I think our restaurants and stuff suffer from probably the most in downtown is not having a daytime population for lunch. And so, the more we can do to add this density of jobs, uh, in the day, uh, the more successful we allow places like our restaurants to be.
Right.
You know, one thing that's, I've been going back and forth, I watched the planning commission and kind of looked at. There's some concern about the docks in the back and having full-size delivery and, and whatnot. And that, it's interesting because I'm trying to think about with Cuzzi's there and kind of the residential piece. Now, if you, if by restriction based on space, you can't have, a business is going to go in there and say, well, we can't have a, a big semi truck come in there. You know, that limits that... You know, that limits that, potentially limits your, your marketability. However, if I'm also the one visiting Cuzzi's or I'm in that, in that consumer and there's a sidewalk and there's a, talk about a pedestrian path, I also trying to picture, maybe it's okay if there's not large semis going down Fire Lane, you know, and making that trip. So it, it, it's interesting to see how that'll play out. I know that was, that was brought up in the planning commission of trying to figure out, it's going to be tight back there and, and what is that space, but I'm just trying to figure out, maybe there is a positive if it's not the big semi.
Either way, I mean, if you have smaller trucks that come and go all the time, that, until we really understand more about and hear what the market is saying about the site, then we can really respond to that. At this point, since we really don't know a lot, we want to point out to the applicant that you, you should be considering about what's happening in the rear there because it can impact your site and its marketability. And I think that's, you know, one of those conditions to say, you know, we want you to, that's something to keep in mind is that relationship on the backside of the buildings for deliveries. Because you also can't really control sometimes what people show up to your site with.
See, that, that was my point. They talk about they just want box trucks, but you don't have any guarantees of that.
Right.
And if they, you know, even if somewhere that there's allowing to put the fifty-three footer in there, but you might have to wheel it all.
Right.
You know, just to allow that, but not to say that you can't get a, a truck back there and there's nowhere for it to go. You can't do that either.
So that's some of those conversations that they really need to understand from the marketplace of what type of users are there and what is their demand for dock space, presuming they even have some. Because you might find somebody who's maybe even more office-y than manufacturing or does a different type of manufacturing process where you don't have a lot of things coming or going. Until they really get out in the marketplace, it's, we're, we're all kind of speculating a bit, but we want to point out the issues that we potentially see in the site plan at this point so that they are aware of them as they really start pulling their plans together and really starting to spend a lot of money putting those plans together. We want to make sure that they understand that so that they can react accordingly with, and plan accordingly for their site.
I think one of the key things is that, you know, regardless of what, you know, the, you know, developer actually does and applicant does in terms of obtaining a, you know, tenant for those spaces. You know, we've seen plenty of businesses say, you know what, maybe we grew too fast, we got to find a different place, they're out. And next thing you know, another tenant moves in, we have no sense who that tenant is. Even if it is presumably built to suit like Formica where at least their intent is they'll be there long-term with some expansion room to grow, these are designed to be flexible spaces where different tenants could potentially come in and we don't necessarily have control of who's going to be there.
Well, and we see that right now, these are really similar to the product like up at Inglor and Bavaria on that northwest corner there or even the stuff like behind Holiday at Inglor and forty-one where they are. I mean, you, you do see a lot of turnover in those businesses because they do, they, they're perfect for the business that's going in and growing.
Exactly.
You know, because they can go in in one bay and then be able to potentially expand into two, but then eventually sometimes you'll see them move into a much bigger space.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, I mean, they're, they've been, to me, from a community's perspective, they've been real successful space to have in town because it's allowed to have that small office space that's flexible that allows you to sort of incubate these new businesses in the community.
To piggyback that, how, about, just curiosity, about how big are those office spaces in the front, like?
Individually, they're each fifteen hundred square feet in size, yep.
Yeah. And we've seen that with some of them, you know, they're, they're about fifteen hundred square foot up there too. And we've seen, you know, the buildings usually are typically about forty-five hundred, five thousand square feet. And so, people will end up taking the entire thing and make that in their entire space. So, they're, they're really nice flexible space.
Yep.
As good as every incubator type of space or small business growth space.
But they, I, I think solving the parking issue is a big one though because that, they are very high parking demand type uses.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because it could limit what they do in the future and it might have to be a make or break on.
Right.
Unless they, unless they share Cuzzi's parking lot with them.
Hopefully they do during the lunch hour and that's.
Yeah.
All right, I think I captured everything on that slide. They also provided an alternate, alternate layout that they explored. And again, this came down to getting those extra parking spaces in front of all the units for those professional office units. So, this was another one that they explored which pushed the buildings closer to the south. But again, they didn't land on that because they preferred an option that provided more parking spaces in front of their units. So again, this is another thing that we'll continue to work with the applicant on to ensure that we get a happy medium there. And again, we've, we've kind of explored a couple of different ways to incorporate additional stalls in front of those units so that for them, it becomes more of a marketable site. They've also included a truck turning exhibit. Again, this is kind of where our concerns came from in terms of the spacing issues and how it's moving back there. So we kind of touched on that a little bit already, but again, a piece we'll continue to work with the applicant on as they prepare for preliminary. Another area of note is the overall design and architecture of the buildings that they're proposing out there. So, on this slide, I have the professional office buildings being shown. So they have built this product before in Mendota Heights, which I'll show a picture of as well. And it worked quite well over there, so they are bringing it over here into Chaska for the professional office users. So, these buildings in total are twelve thousand square feet, eight different tenant spaces, three different buildings. So, two buildings will have three units in them, one building will have two, two units in them. And they envision them to be owner-occupied for those units. The look of them was very intentional in terms of having it be a little bit more residential and more of a professional office look to it. They wanted these buildings to be set apart from the industrial buildings out there to again attract people within the marketplace. So again, this is something that they used over in Mendota Heights and they figured they'd bring it over here to Chaska in terms of kind of the overall same look that they were doing over there. The materials are composed of glass, brick, stone, and LP smart side. So again, as they prepare for their preliminary, we have certain ordinances that they have to meet in terms of class one materials on office buildings. So they will have to show during that preliminary submittal how they meet those requirements. In addition to that, they'll have to show three hundred and sixty-degree architecture since this is a, a pretty well-exposed site on a corner. With the office buildings and the elevations they're showing right here, doesn't seem to be a problem in meeting that requirement. Just something that we'll have to keep in mind as they're moving forward. So this is one of the concerns brought up by staff in our report of how these buildings fit in to the overall context. The Chaska Building Center Development Site is, has a very industrial feel to it and look to it. The two buildings that are there today and currently being constructed are flat-roofed buildings, tuck-up panels, so have, have a very industrial look to them. So throwing these buildings in there, I start to question how they really fit in with the overall development. So, again, it kind of opens up that question of how we can continue to work with the applicant on, looking at the design and seeing how they could show congruency between all the buildings out there. I think for them, you know, their concern is having them stand out and, and being different from the industrial buildings since it's attracting a different type of market out there. They've shown a couple photos of the Mendota Heights project that they've done. And I think the overall difference comparing this one to the Chaska site is just the scale of it. The one in Mendota Heights was done at a much larger scale. These office buildings are pretty much on their own site, segment, segmented away from the other industrial buildings that are out there. So, it does make sense to show difference between these buildings and kind of the existing industrial buildings out there. So, with the site that we're dealing with today, it doesn't necessarily have that same scale. You know, you're plopping these professional office buildings basically on the same site as the industrial building that they're proposing to. So, there's definitely a, a spacing element to that and how it really fits in. So again, that's just another one of our concerns as they're moving forward to see how we can basically manipulate or modify those overall designs to show overall harmony between those buildings. This is the industrial building that they're proposing, so this one's on the back or north side of the site. In total, that one's twenty-five thousand square feet in area. They're showing it as six separate tenant spaces, but again, that could change. Twenty feet high at its total maximum height as of right now. Loading docks in the rear are on the north side there. The materials are glass, brick, stone, burnished block, and precast panels. Since this is an industrial building, they'll have to meet a different set of standards in our building design and materials ordinance for industrial buildings. And like we mentioned with the professional office buildings, they will also have to show that three hundred and sixty-degree architecture specifically for the south and east sides of this building since those will be the most exposed of the two elevations. So, some of these we've already kind of covered, but these are the main pieces that we still have to kind of work through as they're putting together more detailed plans. So, looking at the overall layout of the site, where is there possibilities to add more space for parking stalls as well as just for the overall site and providing space for the loading dock area? Making sure that all the vehicle accesses into the site align with Cuzzi's. That's always been a good practice in terms of having good traffic flow in the area. So, there's only one access that really needs to move a little bit to line up with the Cuzzi's access. And then seeing how the setbacks can show a little bit more congruency with the other two sites, the DDK site and the Formica site, to show a little bit more harmony between kind of the streetscape there. And then with the building design, I kind of already went over that, so showing how they can fit together, but also fit into Chaska as well. And then working on the parking piece and where we can potentially add more stalls to meet parking code. So those are kind of the main pieces that we'll continue to work with the applicant on moving forward. So, at this point in time, at this concept level, it's pretty typical for these pieces to be addressed and have concerns about at this level. So it's with the preliminary that we start to really address and nail down those code requirements that will help get them to. So, we are asking you to make a motion tonight to adopt resolution number two thousand nineteen dash fifteen, which is approving the concept plan for the DDK office and industrial buildings on the Chaska Building Center site based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. Happy to answer any other questions, otherwise we do have Mike Melton here in the audience from DDK to help answer questions too.
I, I agree with what Matt said earlier, you know, it's what the vision was, is to create jobs and have that there. And I, I like the idea of what's happening, I'm just concerned with what we already are concerned about is, you know, to make sure that we're not trying to put too much stuff in that small of an area.
Right.
So, the key is, is if you can work out the details and, and everybody can come out, work it out good, I, I think it's a good first stab at it and I think it's a good place to start moving forward.
I completely agree.
Yeah, I was just going to echo Mark, yep.
Yeah, I completely agree. It's, you know, I think one of the things that, you know, we've talked about this for a number of years now, is just like is being able to create these jobs in, to support downtown, create those, that daytime headcount. And that's so critical here and this is a fantastic, you know, kind of the last piece of that puzzle and that site that's been sitting vacant for a really long time. So this is, is great to see this. And I think that, again, is the devil's in the details because, you know, it's like between the Cuzzi site, the neighbors in the back there, behind the other side of the creek and all that. You know, I think once, we can work through that successfully, I think then we'll be in really good shape.
So, fence separating the trail, the pedestrian trail, the creek in that backyard, if I remember correctly.
On the north side of the?
The trail's on the north side?
Well, the, the bridge is right at the end of that street, so it comes from. It's on the, it's on the south side and then the bridge cuts across and then it's on the north side.
Yeah, it's the north side of the creek behind this side, it's on the south side of the creek behind Cuzzi's. So it basically makes a big S and goes behind there. So there's, there's actually quite a bit of green, green space on this site between the trail. Well, there's the creek too, the creek is separating.
Right.
That gr- blue space.
Okay, ready for a motion?
Yeah, if you guys are done and everybody's good with, with where we're at, yeah.
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the applicant too for, you know, coming to Chaska and doing this project too. Really appreciate that. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-nine fifteen, approving the concept plan for Chaska Building Center Phase Two DDK, Phase Three DDK Construction, PC number twenty nineteen oh one.
Okay, so I, I, what?
With staff recommendations.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Wang, second by Councilmember Hatfield, adopting resolution twenty nineteen dash fifteen. And the provisions are already in there, so.
Yep.
We should be good for that, so. All right, any further discussion? No, no, did the applicant want to speak? Did you have anything you wanted to say, I, before I close it?
Uh, you guys look like you're ready to wrap it.
No, I.
We're just getting started.
You got to come up here or they can't hear you on TV.
Just say who we are.
My name is Mike Melton, CEO with DDK. Let's see, if there's one thing I've ever learned is if it's going well, keep your mouth shut. All right, so, and that was a great phrase. We're going to shake it up a little bit, jigger mine, I'm more of a kind of shaken, not stirred, I suppose. Same deal. But, we're looking forward to working with staff, we have been working with staff, so it's great. So, council, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your help.
Perfect, all right, great. Didn't want you to help, help holding something and not having an opportunity to get it out, so.
And just to point out, Mike's pretty relatively new to the community, working in this and we've had a chance to work on a couple of things, so it's a real pleasure to have him in the community and working with him, so.
All right, any further discussion? If not, we got a motion and a second on the table for, again, twenty nineteen fifteen, concept plan for DDK. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, for being here. All right, we move on to bills. Anyone have a question on a bill? Not an entertaining motion.
Motion to carry the bills.
Second?
Uh, motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Wang, pay to bill's discussion.
Hearing none, Nate, we call roll.
Yes, Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Wang?
Yes.
Councilmember Gra?
Yes.
Mayor windshield?
Yes. All right, moves to other business, Councilmember Gra.
I was just going to mention, because I, I, I am who I am and my family's my family. So, we actually are able to celebrate my youngest birthday, we turned four two weeks ago now.
Oh, you can't talk about that.
At the Chaska Community Center.
Now you can talk.
And, and then actually yesterday in the Blizzard, we went to open swim and the four-year-olds commented like, this place is awesome, I had my birthday here and I get to go swimming here. And, and that's why people live in Chaska, right? And that just sums it up in the eyes of a four-year-old, things to do, things to fun. He was so proud to tell his, his friends that come experience the gym and we had the bounce house and, and to have that amenity and, and have a lot of these, you know, he, a lot of these parents have come in, that came in for his birthday with their kid are not maybe from Chaska. And having to hear them comment about the facility and, and all that is, it's, it's just, it's just great to kind of see. So, it was appreciated that, it was a friendly reminder of even when it's fifty mile per hour wind, there's a warm cozy place at the Chaska Community Center to, to take a dip in the pool. I jokingly asked if they wanted to go on the splash pad that looks like it's covered by about three feet of snow. That was not an option though, so. That's all I had, otherwise, yeah, just those creative amenities in City Chaska.
Perfect. Councilmember Hatfield?
Nothing. No.
It's up to you there.
Yeah, so I feel like, I feel like I'm going to channel some of our formal council members who had a few things to say, so.
Uh-oh.
I shut him off.
So, which is all good stuff, though. So, which is all good stuff, though. So, just, so, since the last meeting, we had the Fireman's Park Fishing Tournament. The turnout there was really good. By the time I got there, you know, like a lot, there was like a couple hundred people in the event center, you know, drinking hot cocoa and warming up, and it was still pretty cool. I mean, there's still a lot of people out there fishing by the time I was there, but it was pretty amazing to see, you know, it looked like another successful event, so that was really fantastic. Also, Launch Ministry had its grand opening on Second Street in their new location, so that was another success story there. They have two residences upstairs in the facility there, and that's really, you know, great that now we're able to provide housing, which is another issue for, you know, for people who are in desperate need of it. But one of the things that Launch Ministry is always doing is they're supporting, you know, homeless in our community. And so, if, you know, people have like donations of consumable products, so things like toothpaste, shampoo, soap, you know, things like that, they're always in need of those consumables, and that's something that they said they don't, if you have some, feel free to drop them by, and they can always use those.
Clothing, too, right?
I'm sorry. Clothing, they said that they're starting to develop some other partnerships, so that, you know, that way they'll have like some clothing from boutiques and stuff to help, you know, their clients. But, you know, I think that, you know, I guess, I would guess they probably wouldn't turn it away, so, you know, but definitely the things that they need right now are consumables, for sure. Let's see, the Transfer of Memories exhibit was also that same day, too. That was a busy weekend. That was a fantastic, a fantastic presentation by the Meisel family, and to see Judy Meisel speak was, you know, her story was like really, really moving to see those pictures of that Transfer of Memories exhibit was incredibly powerful, too. So, if you haven't had a chance to see it, the exhibit's still here until February 28th.
Through the end of the month.
Through the end of the month. So, I highly recommend it, you know, obviously Judy Meisel's not going to be there all the time, but it's like the exhibit will be here through the end of the month, so certainly encourage everyone to go and check it out. It's just great that we're able to get that here, too.
And the event you're talking about, Mike, with Judy Meisel there and, you know, her presentation and everything, that's actually was videotaped and recorded and is available on our YouTube channel, so that's something that people can still watch and get at least some experience with.
And I think that's on the city website, too, if I remember correctly.
Yes, you can access it through there.
Yep, so if someone wants to find that, they can find the link on the city website.
I will have to say it also, to kind of jump on that as well, is that that was a very interesting, I wasn't sure what to expect out of that, but after going there and staying there and listening to her, I mean, you think about what she had to go through to survive. I mean, it's just unbelievable, and then I can't imagine what it was like for her to see one of the prison guards that she recognized when she was a young teenager, and what goes through a person's mind after all that. That was the most mind-boggling thing of the whole thing, is to think about what she had to live through, and then to relive through that, to be testifying to the German country. I, like I said, she is one tough lady, boy, I tell you what. She, all she was was positive, though. I mean, all she talked about was is to get rid of hate, and I don't know, it was by far more moving than I had envisioned it would be. I just, I don't know that I really, I've gone to the Holocaust at Washington DC Museum, but to really, you know, you see that, and it's numbing, but, I mean, to hear someone like her, that was pretty good.
Well, she, and, you know, just putting it in context, she'd been through some of the most traumatic stuff at the ages, what, 12 and 14 years old? She's, you know, her parents killed at like 14 or so, so, I mean, to see that stuff and experience what she experienced in the middle for teens, it's just, I mean, it's how devastating, and she survived it, and she's such a positive survivor. So, it was incredibly moving. But, so, the exhibit's still going on at the Chaska Community Center, highly recommend that. And finally, Pioneer Trail is also reopened, too. So, yes.
Had to go there, didn't you?
Had to go there, so.
Yeah, no, that's, it was great. Once the weather actually broke up long enough, they were out there like literally at the end of that day when we could see we were going to have about a four-day stretch there where we could get in. They were able to get it done in about two and a half days, open it up by the end of Friday. We still have some re-timing things we needed to do with signals and stuff, but it's fully functional now. We are going to have to do work on it in the spring to repave it because there's no asphalt plants open in the wintertime. But the positive thing when we get into spring is we'll be able to control those closures and how we do it, so it'll be as little, we'll try to create as little impact as possible given what people had to go through for about a three-week period there. It was pretty miserable for people anywhere north of the railroad tracks, so greatly appreciate people's patience. I can completely understand why people's patience floor is pretty thin.
Well, it's, it kind of goes back to what we've been talking about. No matter how much you put things out there, there's somebody that doesn't have access to it. And I started really running into a lot of people and saying, "Why aren't you doing nothing there?" And then I kind of told them what was going on. They had no clue that the whole road was washed out. It was just, all they saw was a little hole, and they still thought the water was on. I mean, then you tell them everything that's happened, and they go, "Okay, I understand that." But I don't, I just don't know how to get, as much as we try and as much information as you put out, it just, you just can't get it to the right...
And I think, you know, the other tough part, too, is that, you know, I think the thing that probably stunk the most out of it was not, A, being able to mobilize stuff up there the whole time. Because when people don't see things happening, it's like, "What's going on?"
And that's where road construction all the time in the winter.
There's multiple great reasons why it couldn't happen, but, boy, I'll tell you what, I completely get, I mean, that's extremely frustrating. And it went down into your neighborhood, too, where, you know, people didn't have the option after work if they go to Target to go back across Pioneer Trail, so they all came down by 212 Medical Center. You know, it makes you recognize how important those connections are within our community and, you know, and where some of the weaknesses are, too. I mean, the disconnection...
Well, look at how vulnerable that is with that road.
Well, the disconnection of the very road on the north from the south, that Hunter Mark, is a big vulnerability for us. And, you know, it's something I think in the future we're going to want to think about, you know, is, you know, do we need to try to make a better connection there? Because it's, you know, we can see how vulnerable we can become when we don't have that good connection there.
But that, what happened there is so unique. I've, you know, been around city government for a long time in water main breaks. I don't know that I've ever heard of one like that where it undermined the whole road and the frost is holding up that much in a situation like that, so it was a rare deal, too, so.
Although I think that does underscore that, you know, having redundancy in a system like that is really good, because even if it's not an unplanned event, if it's something like just road construction, being able to say, "Hey, we're going to shut this down temporarily," it's good to be able to have that redundancy in place, and that way that we're not going to create major disruptions, so. And then that's a different thing because it's a mature community in that part of town, so it's not like you can just drop in a road just tomorrow, but, you know, something to think about.
Well, and I think the other thing it points out, and it's something that we're actually solving through the development of southwest Chaska, is we don't have a north-south collector on the west side of town. And, you know, we have Culver's Drive on the north, and we have, down by your house, we have sort of the extension up of the new road that goes to the north. But until that gets connected, we don't have a collector on the west side of town like we do 41 down the center and like we do Autobahn over in the east. And without that, I mean, it creates, everything impacts everything else, and so, you know, I think it definitely showed where there's vulnerabilities in our system.
Definitely something to learn from. Also, so progress at Hazleton Plaza is looking really good. Seems like the little ones are starting to get sited up, and I know we talked about it last time. And Dunkin' Donuts is looking like it's what, May opening or something is what they're talking about, so that's looking good as well. And the Formaco building you mentioned earlier, so that's like, boy, they've thrown those things up really fast, so it's great to see that progress. Public service announcements, because with all the snow that's on the ground, and we were talking about this before the meeting, so everyone probably knows in the city to like, you know, try to get out your fire hydrants in case there's a fire emergency, get those fire hydrants available for you and your neighbors. And also, you know, your sidewalks, too, those are also like individual homeowner responsibility. But one thing that was also brought up was that a lot of times vents on the side of homes, especially newer homes, exhaust out the side, and those tend to get covered up. So, since hearing about that, I'm going to go and check mine tonight when I get home.
I am, too. I mean, it's something that, especially after big windstorms like that last night, we were talking about how the codes have changed over the years now with power vents and stuff like that with hot water heaters, and it used to be your roof was the issue, but now these pipes that come out of new houses are coming at a level of probably four feet, if that, maybe three feet off the ground in there, so it's something for people to be aware of.
That's all I've got.
So, an old wise guy in the water department told me, "They're not fire hydrants. Do you ever see fire come out of them? They're water hydrants." There, there's your bit of knowledge for tonight. Matt, you got anything?
Just a couple things. First of all, we have our Employers of Service breakfast tomorrow. We have employees from five years all the way up to 40 years of experience. We actually have a slew of people who are at 20 years of experience.
Thirty.
And 30 years. It's, so, a lot of long-term employees we're recognizing. And the other thing I wanted to point out, we had sort of a, what I consider a tragic day here amongst our city family and employees. We had the loss of one of our employees, Aaron Sharpie, who had been ill for the last few, very ill for the last few weeks, and probably took us by more of a surprise than we, than we thought it was going to. And he's only about probably early 30s, absolutely fantastic guy, you know, for a long time struggled with health issues, but he was one of those guys that you would never know it. He had such a positive attitude on life, and just everybody, everybody knew him across the city because he was just one of those types of guys that just went out and was there to help people and just an absolute tragedy to lose him. But Aaron Sharpie was our accountant in the finance department. I just want to, he deserves a lot of recognition, very fantastic employee and just a great person.
Okay. You're good? Matt, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Nate?
I don't know if you may add.
Kevin?
I'm good.
Over there, anything? All right, I'm just going to close on one thing. I just want to say thanks to our public works crews. They've been putting in tremendous amount of hours, snow plowing. It's, you know, these periods of time where you get snowfall after snowfall, and it gets to be wearing on those guys. I mean, they're working odd hours, and they're all in one night at midnight, and, you know, they maybe get one night's sleep, and then they're up at, you know, dark 30 again, so it gets tough on them on these long spells where it snows every other day. So, I think they're doing an awesome job. One thing that I still hear, a lot of places I go, that people will tell me that we have the best plow crews around, that they'll drive to other cities, and there are cities that they're not plowed out like they are here in Chaska. And I, for someone that's lived here for quite a while, I totally agree with that, that we can get all of ours done and, you know, easily within an eight-hour period. I mean, obviously, when it's snowing all day long and it's coming down by the truckloads, you know, you can't keep up with some of that stuff, but our crews do a great job. And just some public service things out there as well. The roads, as these piles are piling up, the roads are getting narrower, the plows can't get it any higher, so people, if you're parking your cars in the street, don't park across from somebody else. That hinders fire trucks, ambulances. Stagger your vehicles if you got to park, will park on the same side as the other car, but you got to kind of start watching that stuff now is when it really gets critical on things like that, so. And like Mike says, you know, take that time to clean out your water hydrant, because that's, some of them I see now are buried, and you can barely find the feeler that's up in the air, so please take that time because that's important if it's ever needed. And unfortunately, now is the time that you have because of things like block vents and things like that, so you can have more options of things happening, so. But anyways, I just needed to reach out to the public works crews for the great job they are doing, and you always got a few grumblers out there that something's not quite right, but for the most part, most people I talk to are very satisfied with the service that we give here, so.
One thing I will point out, just so people are aware of it, now that we're sort of fully staffed in our CSO departments, there's been neighborhoods that we've had lots of issues with being able to get the roads completely cleared because they just always have cars on them. So, we have been especially out now doing more of the...
Odd even.
Odd even stuff so that we can do that, and I know I can tick some people off, but it's such a huge, huge difference on the streets that we've had issues in the past with being able to get them cleared compared to how it looks now. I mean, it widens the street, and, you know, it is an inconvenience for people, but it's such a big deal, especially when you think about public safety vehicles and stuff getting through. So, just, you know, people probably have noticed that more now, but it's such a huge deal to get those streets fully cleared off that we really appreciate people's assistance with using the odd even parking.
All right. Last call. Motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Motion by Councilmember Wang.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Gra to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. We're adjourned.